I'll call to order this meeting of the council, committee of the whole meeting, August 3rd, 2016, and I would ask that you rise for a moment of silence followed by a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, subcommittee reports. Infrastructure, councillor Cope.
We had a meeting on the 21st of July. Doug was there, Doug Yerger, Keith Place, Mike Glenn Hart, myself. Dennis was absent. Public Works, we discussed closed loop with Doug, Pendott working on bid specs. The different areas included in the closed loop is Potts Grove Lower, North Coventry, Pottstown Limerick. The Carousel's plumbing's done, water service is next, garage not quite done, flushing hydrants, interviewing candidates for openings at a couple of the different facilities. Licenses and inspections, Keith, Ludi issue and works. 603 Lincoln to demolish, it's collapsing. Chestnut Street demo done, demolition done, new fence to be installed, second period rental in play, some in first not complete, third period billing out and 2017 budget done, break even. Parks and Rec, summer camp is in good shape. Monta Toney Green, sales on target, 30 percent growth. Riverfront Park, ash trees are sickly, while still healthy, considering selling to a lumber company, and the monies that they'll get from that, they'll replace the trees. And I guess the park is like 75 percent ash. They're correcting the abatement at the riverfront bridge, the cost is $64,000, they're looking for grant funding for that. The bridge is stabilized and the spray park got a new grinder pump installed, and that's that.
Great, thank you. Next, our economic development and business liaison.
Two things. I'd like to welcome Tompkins Vista Bank, the Pottstown, they had their grand opening last Thursday at their 258 East High Street location. And the other thing I wanted to let you know was that in your packets for the council, Monday night's council meeting, the adjusted budget will be sent out to you, please review it, because it'll require a vote Monday evening, and the adjusted budget, so you know, is not a change in the bottom line of the budget, it is a mere shifting within the departments to take care of items where expenditures exceed what we expected, but it is not an increase, it is taking money from one line item to another to balance the budget. And that is the extent of the finance report.
Thank you. Transportation, councillor Cope.
No meeting.
No meeting. Ricketts Center, councillor Kirkland.
We don't have a meeting, but I request a report and nothing yet.
Nothing. Okay. All right. Pottstown School Board, Mr. Heidel.
Good evening. The district is going to begin a new search for the superintendent, probable start date will be October of 2016. The school district has added an additional fifth grade teacher position to the middle school beginning with this school year. The family advisory committee, a group of Pottstown district parents, are going to work with building relationship with the district and the school board. Pottstown High School athletics will include a JV golf team for the 2016 season, its hoped continual interest will allow the team to start varsity program in 2017. Brookside Country Club has offered their course to the district at no charge. Thanks to the efforts of council person Miller and council president Ween, the junior firefighters' club at the high school looks to become a reality. We await a written proposal outlining the program after which the board will approve it as an extracurricular club. The board passed the Every Student Succeeds Act resolution advocating to diminish the overuse of standardized testing for the evaluation of students and teachers. New playground equipment is being installed at the elementary schools and is expected to be complete for the start of the school year. The board has asked our solicitor to contact the borough solicitor, asking for both taxing bodies to work on a joint letter asking nonprofits for pilot payments. The board wishes to congratulate Ryan Regensburg for his promotion from secondary teacher to assistant principal at the Pottstown Middle School, as well as the hiring of Dean Salini as director of human resources for the district. The board also wishes to congratulate former Franklin Elementary School librarian Dennis Arms in his new position with the Coatesville School District. He will be truly missed. Finally, the board approved the Lurter Resolution as presented, supporting the enactment of the ordinance establishing the Lurter District by the Borough Council. Board members William and Ween wish to thank council persons Miller and Arms for their work on the ad hoc committee that created the final draft of the resolution that we approved. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is set for Thursday, August 22nd, at 7:00 PM in the high school cafeteria.
Great, thank you. FSC, ad hoc zoning. At our last meeting, we listened to a presentation by a firm that specializes in rewriting zoning ordinances and the like, and we're reviewing their proposal, we do know that they did it for Phoenixville and other communities, so we're taking a look at that. If it's done strictly by our zoning, ad hoc zoning committee, this could take us years, and we're in need of streamlining that document. There was nothing else really pertinent to be discussed that evening, but it will not stop our committee with moving forward to making zoning changes that we'd like to do as expedient as possible, and that's it. Animal Committee, vice president Miller.
We met on the 29th, I don't have anything new for you, and we are meeting again on August 11th.
Safety, chief Drumhauer.
Just a couple of things, obviously the camera presentation tonight is going to be very important for us, but as the weather gets a little warmer, we are starting to see more juveniles out at night, so I caution parents, know where their kids are, get them in when the curfews are, or we're going to be in the process of curfew sweeps, so unfortunately that means arrests. If you want to keep your children safe, my suggestion is make sure you know where they are and they're off the streets at night. This is good news, but yet bad news at the same time. We've instituted the use of naloxone in May, and as of right now, we have seven complete saves. So while it's good that we've saved seven people, it's bad that we have that much abundant use of heroin in the town. The canine kits are in, the naloxone for the dogs are in the kit, and one of the things that we found out with our dog getting injured is we were woefully equipped for treating a dog. We're great being able to treat people, we got all kinds of bandages, but we don't have the things that necessarily a dog would need. Our vet took it upon himself to put together trauma kits, and he actually is donating them to the police department, which is a very nice thing. I put a letter together, and they're going to make a presentation and accept the kits tomorrow. And finally, today I was down at Pottstown Memorial Medical Center at their staff meeting, and we awarded Daniel Tobin an award for civilian citizens' award, which is one of the highest awards a civilian can get from the Pottstown Police Department, and that was in the case of Officer Portoc was down there, and he was dealing with a subject who had mental distress, and the subject attacked Officer Portoc and tried to get his gun. Daniel Tobin, who was a nurse down there, basically jumped in, helped us tackle the bad guy, we managed to get him handcuffed, but because of his actions, he directly saved Officer Portoc's skin for that man attacking him. So we were very pleased by that, we met with the CEO, we gave him a big award, and of course, a challenge point, so, thank you, that's safety.
Good, thank you.
Can I ask you a question, chief? This is regarding the curfew violation, and I believe since this is really a quality-of-life issue in the household where there's a breach leading to the children being out that late, that a series of interventions for awareness, instead of going right to arrest for curfew violation, might be in order with the nature of our community, and also that this could be a subsequent of ACIS, as we're moving towards this informed trauma care community. Just that we would consider putting children immediately into the system without considering the fragile conditions in which they may be living, and even parents moving here from urban areas where this is considered the norm, and not really understanding all of the laws and implications. I just think that a step would be a parent intervention.
Yes.
If it's not with our agency per se, with the YW or some other community partner that intervenes on issues regarding, you know, parents and children, and then secondly, the additional court option before they are actually given that violation, so that by the time violation is given, it's more than enough warning, more than enough education, more than enough notice that this is a possibility.
We've been working throughout the summer, stopping children and telling them when it's time to go home, et cetera, like that, but one of the things that we're headed towards also is the youth aid panel complement. We were scheduled to have training on that tomorrow, unfortunately, staff conference got canceled, so it'll be in September, but that's also a very viable thing other than just arrest. So, I mean, we're going to use every tool we have in our toolbag on this, but unfortunately, when you have, quite frankly, if you, when you have 16 and 17-year-olds out, 2 o'clock in the morning committing armed robberies, that's an issue.
That's a crime.
Right.
But just violating the curfew by being outside without anything attached could be another matter.
Right.
But both do involve the parent.
I don't disagree with you.
Because in some stage of the life of maintaining order, that breach may also come into position that they would have to also either be fined or given some type of additional if these crimes are committed, because they're underage. So, there's just a lot to consider. You know, we get a lot of bombardment about make it safer, make it safer, but it takes a lot of steps and a lot of awareness by, like I said, people that move here from big cities where a lot of the things we consider as crime, they consider as a part of their everyday existence, so it's somewhat of a transition. But thank you.
Chief, what, I'm sorry, what time is the curfew at the ages?
Sunday through Thursday is 9:30, and on Friday and Saturday it's 11:00.
Thank you.
Okay, mayor's report.
Thank you. I just would like to commend Monday night's public forum that was held, the first of many forums, Pottstown Talks with Emmanuel Wilkerson, and it was very impressive, the amount of community involvement, that was high energy and extremely orderly and forward-thinking. So I would just like to make a commendation to the public, to pass the word, and when the next meetings are announced, please make sure that you're there. On last evening, we had National Night Out. There were two sites with last night's National Night Out, kind of the old-fashioned cookout, summer picnic, block party, the family gathering. You know, this is a law enforcement nationwide initiative to bring people together so that you can quote-unquote "know your neighbor." We do know also that there are several neighbors we may never know, or no one may never know, but the key is awareness, and to be able to watch out one for another as much as possible, especially when it comes to the elderly and people that live alone, if you don't see them for a while, you know, there's been several people that have been found after a number of days, natural cause situations, but it's just always good to remember that, you know, we are a brother's keeper, we just have one earth that we're all a part of. I recently attended the state mayor's association annual meeting, it was the 145th meeting. I was able to enter a resolution regarding House Bill 2111. I was met with a little bit of subtle resistance, one which was, the budget's already been decided, you're a little bit too late on this issue. Well, one thing we do know is that budgets can be reopened and money can be redistributed, we know that to be a fact about budgets. One thing I did learn too about, at the federal level, there's no more appropriation, so I'm still trying to wrap my head around that, but, so budgets are very flexible, and the distribution of money is very flexible. So I'd like to say again, to support equity first, that's supportequityfirst.org, this is a website that explains how 180 school districts are underfunded in the state, to which Pottstown is one of those districts. There are other districts in more severe conditions than Pottstown, such as Reading, $95 million under budget. Why do I mention Reading, why do I care about other school districts? Again, it's the matter of equity. What we've been experiencing in the state since 1991 is the effects of a policy called Hold Harmless. In 1991, Hold Harmless came into position, and Hold Harmless has been one of the things contributing to the deterioration and decline of funding equity that we see today. So there are 320 districts that are overfunded, and the total dollar amount for all underfunded districts is $937 million. How can we stop the bleeding? How can we begin to reverse the trend? And there is a solution, House Bill 2111. It's put in by state representative David Parker of Monroe County, who has three school districts. In his tabulation, if the $400 million of new funding monies available in the budget were redistributed, not with overfunded school districts being left out, but that the equation being three to one with a preference to underfunded districts, in six years, there could be a turnaround, and this could result in a substantial improvement of property values and basis for economic redevelopment in impoverished areas. Our school district particularly stands to be under by between $11 to $19 million, that's the latest figures that I've been given. We deserve that money, of course, but the system needs to be adjusted, and people should be aware that not only is this, this is not a partisan issue, this is an issue that has some other tentacles, but this is an issue that involves a vote at the level of the state legislature, where near unanimously, since 1991, they have voted to continue this system of inequity. So I'm asking you to look at the website, supportequityfirst.org, I'm asking you to call the numbers, email the individuals that have given some headway to this, and we have to realize that in order for this to happen, it would be a push of a Commonwealth vote, and the Commonwealth vote would be that causes those districts who are overfunded to see the value of the leverage to the underfunded districts, and play fair. If not, you know, it seems that this has been a plan, and when I was on the school board, one of the second meetings I was at, it seemed that between unfunded mandates and other types of burdens that are imposed on local districts, that one day, the state would take over certain districts, or they would be forced into certain types of configurations, such as I heard from Evan Brandt yesterday, that in Erie, they're thinking of just closing the school and sending them to the county, was that right? Pardon me? Surrounding districts. So, you know, this could be a crisis yet in the making, and it could be averted, so we were talking about solutions Monday night, here's a solution, let's see what happens. Another issue at the state mayor's conference was the opiate crisis and the recent escalating amount of heroin deaths in all sectors of society in all places, and Congressman Ryan Costello followed up after I returned from the mayor's association to have a forum on this very same topic, to which southeastern Pennsylvania has been described as one of the places where you can get the most pure heroin in the northeast region of the country. So hopefully, we can get appropriate funding for education awareness and interventions. I also learned that children have access to teenagers, visiting teenagers, when your cabinet has opiates in it, that they are actually stealing them from their parents, and their friends are stealing them as well, but this was a new twist, that at real estate open houses, they're also finding that people are going into the cabinets and taking drugs that they're finding in the people's homes. So these are two areas where you can heighten your own protection of others for any type of opiate drug or drug that has any addictive potential. Another option is to bring it back here to the Pottstown Police Station where we have a drug give-back program. There is a huge box in the entry to the police station, and I'm just saying, if someone elderly passes away, or they no longer need that med, or it's been subscribed to you and you're allergic to it, don't just keep it at home, because you just never know where it may end up. So this drug give-back box that we have is accessible 24/7 inside the police station, and I'm just encouraging people to be aware that the solution to the opiate crisis is not to lock up every addict as a criminal. This was highly stressed by law enforcement and also the state, the person who's in charge of the Department of Drug and Alcohol. This is being looked at as a disease, it's being looked at as something, again, that's underfunded, and the money's been barreled and siphoned to other quadrants, so, you know, there's a real crisis out there, and it's everyone's responsibility. It's not just a thing that happens in urban areas, it happens among the wealthy as well. I also was able to attend the community launch for the Pottstown Trauma Informed, Caring Community, and I was talking about adverse childhood experiences, and I'd like to read the 10 that were highlighted. Physical abuse, emotional abuse, sexual abuse, physical neglect, emotional neglect, family member with mental illness, witnessing domestic violence, parents with drug and alcohol addiction, one or more parent incarcerated, and parental separation or divorce. As the community moves forward in triaging particularly the school district children and their family, I was able to make a recommendation, and this recommendation goes out to members of the spiritual community, and I'd just like to read this as another alternative, which may have a collateral arm to what's being done at the school district that can be supplemented through religious communities. Trauma affects every cell of the body, and it imprints a memory that cannot be removed by drug therapy. As a course of recent trainings as a minister, the understandings of removing these elements out of the human soul involves processes known as inner healing. These can be a feasible option, open to someone who's willing to be submitted to this biblical means of removing embedded trauma that does not involve drug therapy. And it does cause reduction or removal of the associated behaviors that come along with all of the types of trauma that I mentioned and others. I'd just like to read you a little bit of, and show you a graph of our crimes, Part 1 and 2 crimes, just as a course of a graph, if they can zero in on this, this is our Part 1 crimes in a 12-month comparison between this time, this year, and last year. You probably can see these bars, the biggest bars in the Part 1 crime is theft. Theft occurs when people want something someone else has, duh, we know that, right? But when that person is a person who's involved in addiction, it also becomes dangerous, you know, so our, the big bar there on the Part 1 crimes is theft, so you can see how prevalent that is. That's a quality-of-life issue that can turn into a deeper issue. I want to show you the Part 2 crimes bars, the highest three, the highest three bars here across the spectrum, the first highest reporting is harassment, the second, drug violations, and the third, public drunkenness. So in a broad sense, people don't get along, they have nothing to do, they don't have a job, they drink and do drugs. What can we all do about this? Sometimes, there's nothing, but wait for the crime and arrest them, then they get clean in jail for a little bit, and then they come out into the regular community. So I'm just impressing upon everyone, again, especially people that are watching at home that never come to the meeting but are going to come to the Pottstown Talks meeting, and know indeed that they know people that are struggling in these areas, direct them to help. It is your responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. And now our managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Ween. First, I'd like to introduce our new assistant borough manager, Pottstown resident Justin Keller. Many of you know Justin, and his current role is the Pottstown Metropolitan Regional Planning Commission or Committee's circuit rider, the regional planning coordinator, if you will. Justin comes to us with a great deal of successful grant writing experience. In addition, Justin has experience with municipal planning, zoning, as well as land use development and project management. Justin, welcome aboard, looking forward to it.
Thank you, thank you very much, happy to be here.
Next, I'd like to let council know that we have finally closed out on the final change orders for the Public Works facility building, the new building, and I'm happy to report that, if you recall, I had warned council several times that we were probably going to get swamped with some charges for the soil, or the bad soils at that location. Fortunately, our architect and our, the engineer that we hired to manage the soils were able to eliminate most of the issues that had been warned about. Construction cost overruns were held to less than 2% of the contract sum, and I anticipate that we'll have a final reporting for you next month on the, not only the construction costs, but the overall costs, including the engineering and legal purchase and all the other stuff that went with it. And last but certainly not least, I want to remind council, we have established our second session of the Citizens Leadership Academy, which will commence on Thursday, September the 1st of this year. It will run for, I believe, 10 weeks, ultimately culminating in the graduation at a borough council meeting. You recall, last month, I believe, we held a graduation ceremony. There are still vacancies, the maximum class size is 20 participants, and I would suggest that anyone interested in signing up do so very soon, because the class is filling quickly. And that's the extent of my report.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation from the Dana Corporation, Mr. Dan Aaron. Welcome.
Greetings. I don't have a formal presentation, I don't know what's customary for Pottstown, but in my role as plant manager, I think it's very important that we establish a relationship amongst business and community. I don't think I can be a great corporate citizen if I'm not a good community citizen, so I just wanted to come today and introduce myself. In talking to people in the community, there's a lot of thought that the facility is closing, has closed, is a warehouse, et cetera, and I'm actually very proud to be in the Dana community, the Dana family. We've invested quite a bit of money, we had Mr. Flanders there this later today, showing them our transformation, and we're a $100 million operation at this point, we're investing in the neighborhood of about $25 million in the last three years, just in our local facility, so, again, to the council and everyone here, I just wanted to introduce myself, make sure that we know each other by face, and just to let you know, if there's anything that you need, if you're interested in coming to the facility, or anything of that nature, I'm here, and I would love to see and meet everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Okay, how about number seven presentation? We have with us tonight, captain of a new group to our town, Assistant District Attorney Brianna Ringwood, going to talk to us about safety cameras.
Yes, can everybody hear me? I'm not used to sitting at a table, can you hear me if I stand like this? I'm used to talking to a jury, so.
Okay. Okay.
I think the cam, I think the mic picks me up if I stand here. Good evening, members of council, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you all today. Before I get started on, on the safety cameras, I just want to take a minute to introduce a couple of people that are here with me today. First of all, sitting in the back in the blue tie, ADA Richard Bradberry, sitting next to him in the black, ADA Heather Hines, the rest, they are the rest of the community prosecution team. So we're happy to be here today. In addition, I have Montgomery County Detective Lieutenant now, actually, Mark Azup, and Kate Delano, who's the Director of Communications for the DA's office. We're very pleased to be here today, and we are, in fact, here to talk to you today and present to you a plan for the installation of an integrated network of crime and safety cameras that will be, that we would like to install in the borough in high-crime areas. And this is, I just want to stress in the beginning, this is a very key part, a very key step in our larger goal of making Pottstown, or improving the safety and security of this community. The installation and use of these cameras will benefit the community in a lot of different ways. But before I get to that, I want to talk for a minute about the details of the system that we've identified. This is a state-of-the-art camera system. It's actually currently being used successfully in the borough of Lansdale. To begin, the initial installation, and I know I've talked to some of you about this, the initial installation will include the server and all the nuts and bolts that go along to support about approximately 36 cameras, or up to 36 cameras. The initial installation will also include 10 initial cameras. Basically, what we're doing, what we'd like to do is give Pottstown the backbone for a larger integrated camera system that allows Pottstown to continue to add on to the system to, to continue to make the community safer and adapt to changing crime trends in the future. These cameras will be located in areas that have been identified as hotspots for violent crime. What do I mean by hotspots for violent crime? We have, what I basically, what I mean is, areas in the borough that are seeing a very high volume, or a high volume of, of violent crime involving firearms and drug-related offenses. The way that we identify these locations first is by speaking to the police department and our, in our, in our partnership with the police department. Spoke with them about where they are experiencing the highest volume of drug-related and firearm offenses, and then we analyzed data, crime data, over the past approximately two years, specifically focusing on violent crimes involving firearms. And we use that data to confirm that, in fact, the locations that we've identified are areas that are seeing a lot of those types of crimes. So that's where, that's where, where the cameras will be located. In addition, these cameras will, the images that are produced will be, are clear images of public areas during both the day and the nighttime. And we do have an example of that to show you today. I'm just going to take a, a moment for Detective Azup to get that set up. We've brought to you today, is it the video or stills?
Video.
Okay. We've brought to you today some, a video to show you as an example of what exactly the type of images these cameras will be capturing. And while that's up there, I'll just take a minute, you know, I've, I've met with many of you and talked to you about this project, and what I, what I saw were the benefits, and what I suggest you will, will be the benefits for this community. And I want you all to know that we take privacy concerns very seriously. As you can see from looking at the video, the, the images captured are really nothing more than anybody standing on a sidewalk or a street will see. It's, it's, you know, I just want to stress the importance of, of that point, which is that, again, this is all stuff that's within view of the public. This footage will also be livestreamed directly into the police department. It will be monitored by dispatch, and the video will be regularly purged unless it's been preserved specifically in connection with a criminal investigation or prosecution. The backbone, finally, the backbone and the initial 10 cameras will be purchased or paid for by the District Attorney's Office using forfeited funds, and it represents a very significant investment in Pottstown and its future. As I mentioned before, the installation of these cameras will serve to benefit this community in a variety of ways. First of all, it will assist in criminal, in criminal investigations. It will, the system will, is a, is a very valuable tool for prosecutors prosecuting cases in the courtroom. And finally, it will also deter crime and criminal activity in the future. With respect to the first point, assisting in criminal investigations, we in law enforcement recognize that a lot of times, we're placed in a position where we have to ask a lot of our, of the citizens of this county and the citizens of this borough. And we have to do that because we need to make sure that the community is safe, and we need to hold those accountable who are committing crimes in the borough. But we, we still acknowledge that, that there's a burden and that there's a pressure, and, and that sometimes there's even fear and intimidation that goes along with that. The use of these cameras in the borough will decrease our reliance on eyewitness testimony and therefore take some of the pressure off community members to step forward and, and testify in court. And, and, and so that is one significant benefit that we, we suggest will come from this. It'll additionally will assist in quickly apprehending and identifying suspects. And as I said before, this video, this technology is an invaluable tool to a prosecutor who's explaining to a judge or to a jury what, what happened. No longer, with, with footage like this, a judge or a jury doesn't have to rely on an eyewitness's testimony to, to create a mental picture in their mind about what happened. They can just watch what happened unfold before their very eyes. I cannot stress the value of that enough. Sometimes and frequently, video evidence can be irrefutable evidence. It makes trials less likely, it makes convictions more certain, and so it, I just cannot emphasize enough to council how vital and how important this type of technology in the courtroom is. And then finally, as I said before, it'll deter future criminal activity. This system, I think the DA about, I guess it was a month ago now, came and out and formally announced our new unit, and in doing so, he, he noted that we believe there's a very small number of people in this community who are the cause of most of the gun violence, most of the violence, most of the drug-related activity. This, the purchase and installation and use of this system shows those people who are plaguing the streets with guns and drugs that we will do what it takes to investigate them and to prosecute them. And they will be discouraged from bringing guns and drugs and opiates to these streets as a result. And so that is, that is the importance of, of this system. That is what it means to Pottstown. And I know the mayor noted earlier in her, in her report, the, the Pottstown Talks Community Forum that occurred on Monday. I was there too, and I did a lot of listening because I think it's important for us to understand what's going on in the community. And one thing that I heard echoed throughout is the desire to foster a community, a sense of community, to have people come out of their houses, to go to the farmer's market, to, to basically engage in, in those kind of community activities that really make people proud to be from Pottstown and to come together. And again, that's what these cameras can help do for Pottstown. They can make people feel safe to come out of their houses at night, to go to the parks, to spend time with kids outside. So that is the importance to, to this community. I'm just going to pause for a minute if the chief wants to, I'll give him a moment just to address council if he has any other things to add as far as the benefits to the, to the community.
Obviously, our system was modeled after Lansdale, and Lansdale was the key factor where we actually went and looked at the system. We had some video footage tonight. The interesting thing that I want you to know about that is I spoke to Lansdale, and they said that their crime dropped by 38% over five years. That's significant. Even if we experienced half of that, that is, that is just an incredible opportunity for law enforcement, the community, and everybody. So I just want you to know that those were the numbers we're talking about, the cameras. And the only thing I, I want to add to is because the cameras are going to be located on, on, on public property, we're asking that you vote in favor of this project.
Thank you. This is not, I just want to stress too, this is not just a harebrained idea, as the chief said, that we're coming to and presenting. This has been proven to be effective, not just in Lansdale, but also around the country. And I just want to, if anybody wants to look up more information about these types of camera systems, I suggest you look at the Urban Institute study, which was a, a study, I believe it was partially funded by the Department of Justice, and it, it examined the use of similar systems in, in big cities such as Washington DC, Baltimore, and Chicago. And just two takeaways, the first being, one of the key elements to success for this type of, of camera system is that it is, in fact, live monitored. And then the second part of this is community involvement and input, and that, that's also a very important point, which brings me to one of my, to my last point. This project is an investment in Pottstown's future that does not end with the initial, initial purchase of the, the system, the backbone, and 10 cameras. It is an important and vital step in making Pottstown a safer place, but there has to be more. And so we call, the DA's office, while we're happy to make this initial investment, we ask council to continue what we've started, to continue to identify locations that are high-crime areas and fund the purchase of additional cameras. Again, this is a system that holds up to 36 cameras. We're supplying the initial 10. We can't stop there. We need to make Pottstown safer by continuing to purchase cameras so that they can be used to help deter activity and solve and investigate and prosecute crime. In addition to that, we also call on community leaders, residents, business, business owners in the borough to help council do exactly just that, help fund the purchase of additional cameras, tell council, give input, provide council with input about where cameras should go. It's so important that we have everybody standing behind this. And that's going to, that brings me just to kind of wrap things up with a call to action, just like I heard on Monday at the Pottstown, Pottstown Talks Community Forum. The purchase and installation of this camera system is another example of how, of our commitment to this community and our willingness to invest in its future. But we can achieve all that we want to achieve for this community acting alone. It can't just be the DA's office, it can't just be the police department, it can't just be Borough Council acting alone. We ask that council support us in our endeavor, work with the community, we, to identify other locations for cameras, funding sources for cameras. We ask community leaders to do the same because while each of us acting individually cannot make a difference in this community, as, as a community working together, we can make a difference in Pottstown. So thank you very much for your time today, and we hope that you approve our, our plan. Thank you.
I, I would like to ask, is there any cost to the borough?
There are some maintenance costs, which I think, I'm going to.
After, excuse me.
The first year of maintenance, we'll, we'll take care through the original proposal. If you do opt to get the maintenance plan after that, it's about $5,000 a year. So we'll cover the first initial year or two of that with the installation.
Okay.
I have a question, Brianna. This, this is a commendation for good use of forfeited funds, but if you don't mind.
For, thanks. If you don't mind for those who are viewing to describe what forfeited funds are and how they make their way into the DA's office, but this is a great utility.
Certainly. Forfeited funds are fun, any money, so I'll give an example because that's really the best way to just, to explain it. Say we, the DA's office executes a search warrant for someone's house, and they find guns, drugs, and a pile of money, say forsake of these $10,000. The DA's office, through civil forfeiture, is able to actually go through a process through the court system to ask a judge to, to basically take that money and provide, give it to the DA's office. And that's under the drug forfeiture laws. Now, the, the way that that money is then able to be used is very, is prescribed by law, and there's a lot of rules, obviously, and there should be. And so one of the, one of the main rules is that it can only be used to, I believe, to go towards drug investigations and the investigation and prosecution of drug crimes, which is, this is one example of the way we're doing that. We're taking that money that we get, that is the fruits of criminal activity, and we're putting it back into the community to help further improve the safety and security of the community.
Thank you. And do we ever, this is just a general question I had regarding the firearms piece, as far as pawn shops and when people trade in a gun at a pawn shop. Do we know if that could be a stolen gun that they're giving to a pawn shop? Is there any kind of inter, interface with pawn shops to see if there's stolen guns in pawn shops?
That's a great question. I'm, I'm not sure of the exact answer to that question, however, it's something I definitely will look into. Detective, or, Richard Bradberry is actually my firearms expert.
Okay.
So looking to him, phoning a friend. No, we definitely should, we'll look into that. We will put that on our list of follow-up things.
I mean, because that could be a county-wide source.
Correct.
Of, of finding guns. So thank you, and thank you for your work here. And just from looking at the crime statistics, it looks like wards one, two, and three have the highest incident of all types of crime. And are the cameras mobile, like if it's been in an area for a while, and then so often what happens is when there's high vigilance in one area, then the incidents scatter somewhere else? You can move them around?
They can be moved within reason.
Okay.
So, and that, it depends on a variety of factors, and again, Detective Azup is my, is my tech guy, but from what I understand, they can be moved within reason. Really, the purchase of additional cameras is probably the better solution because if, if activity is moving because we are concentrating our energy and, and resources in one area, it's probably not moving a block. It's probably moving more significantly than that, I would, so yes, the answer to the question is within reason, but again, the purchase of new cams is probably the better solution to moving and changing crime trends.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Will future purchase of new cameras, are those going to be funded?
We're asking that council, in combination with other, you know, community stakeholders, purchase additional cameras in the future. We're here to, to get, get everything started. The initial investment is certainly very, is very significant, and so, but the future, we, we're asking, we're asking you guys.
Is there a number for that? The estimate for, or what, say one camera?
We do have, we do have information on how much a single count costs, and I can provide that with you.
You said it's a simple purchase of itself every, so often. When does that time, like is it 24 hours? How, how often does it purchase itself?
Right now, I think it's every 30 days. So, and I think every 30 days is regularly purchased, unless, again, it's been flagged and preserved.
And that's each camera?
Yes, that's true.
Have you ever had a situation where a crime occurred beyond the purchasing time? And you missed the, the event?
We have done.
Okay. Is, is it a, is it a push detective operational system, or is it, or is it to use?
It can be booked.
It can be booked.
Yep, depending on the situation.
If it is a push detective system, does that increase the per, the first time?
Correct.
Okay.
It's all based on hard drive CS.
Okay. Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, this listed for approval for Monday evening. Number eight is Human Relations Commission Ordinance Amendment.
Are you going to change it, that we want to do it? You can be able to do the change before we approve, that would be great for Monday?
The vote will take place Monday. We're bringing this up for.
You're going to have to change this, okay?
Yep, we, we received your email.
Okay.
Okay?
Is there any way? Is there any way someone can recap for the public? I mean, I know what we're saying here about email, but since it is a public meeting and there are people who are watching, so is there anybody that wants to talk about that?
There are some blanks to be filled.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I would like some feedback from council generally, because I did receive different comments from different counselors, and I guess, as a follow-up from our meeting last month, I think the, one of the major issues is determining the size of the commission, whether it be five, seven, or nine members, and I'm going to recommend whatever number you pick, you can pick, but it's not a floating number, it's a number that, that you have to live by, or else you change the ordinance if the number changes. That's significant for purposes of having a quorum, so if, in the event you choose to have five members, you need three for the quorum, and again, that would fluctuate based upon the total number you, you select. There was also some question in that first section, under Section 911, was, and frankly, it exists presently, concerning removal of members. Right now, the mayor has the ability to remove members, and we got some comments concerning whether or not there should be notification to the chairperson of the commission if council's considering removing a member. Practically, I never remember council ever, or the mayor ever removing a member during the term of a member, so I'm not really sure that's a big issue either way, but if council thinks it is, we'll need direction on exactly what you prefer with respect to that issue. I guess there was also some questions, or I saw different ideas about the term limits of the members. Right now, the ordinance says it's a five-year term, I think I saw a suggestion of a four-year term. I'm not sure that matters, whatever council's preference is, as far as the term length, we can change it. Right now, it's, it's a five-year term, and that's typically based on the number of members that are on the commission. So they would, that would be staggered as members are appointed. The, I guess, other question, I think that there was some discussion on, was whether or not complaints of discrimination would be limited to the borough or the, the general Pottstown area. Right now, the ordinance draft has written that those types of discrimination claims would be those tied to the borough of Pottstown and not the area generally. And I don't mean to speak for everyone, because I did get several comments, so if there's any other specific questions or areas you want to discuss, any feedback or input from council would certainly be helpful, if you'd like this ordinance ready for next month, so.
One of the things that, that I think is important is to have commissioners from the local area. So if we're doing, if we're doing education, of course, and seminars and stuff with surrounding townships, it would make sense to have the allowance for a couple commissioners to be from a touching township like the Potts Groves or North Coventry. But primarily, the commissioners, you're representing the borough of Pottstown, I think should be from the borough of Pottstown. You know the community, you're familiar with the community, and it is about our community.
Agreed?
Yep.
You have a specific number?
Well, Rita, you're on nine, nine commissioners.
I stay with nine, but I would have to build up for like, three, five, until we can get five years to get maybe nine, and, but that way we don't have to change the ordinance all the time.
Right, but to-
We get a nine, but we can start with five, and maybe two years later, seven, and maybe two years later, get to the point nine.
As long as you're at the starting point of five, which is your, which is your quorum, right?
Yeah.
You, you can do it that way, but just, so you understand, if, if you pass the ordinance that says nine, in order for you to have a meeting, you are going to have to have at least five members present, and you may only have five members of the commission at that point, so every member would have to be present for you to have a quorum to undertake any formal action, just so that's-
Yeah, but at this moment, we have only two.
I understand.
You know, that's how we have to change the ordinance every three years, or every five years, we can just leave it like this, and later on, change it? That's my point, so.
I mean, so what, you're basically saying is leave it like it is now and change it when you get enough members?
That's what I said, if you-
So you'd like to start with five?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any opposition to that?
Five.
Is it two years before you can change to nine, or anytime that they want to change it?
Yeah, you can change the ordinance anytime, but if we're starting with the, the new revised ordinance at five, then the quorum is three.
Okay.
So when the two people present would not have been official to conduct any business?
Correct.
But you just said you had two, so that would not be a legal amount of people to do business.
So, so-
You need three.
So at some point, we would need more, more applicants to come forward, so council could appoint, is what we need.
Right. And then out of, then out of that five, so we're, we're starting with five for, for our commission, so I would recommend at least three of those five, or four, be borough residents.
But at this moment, we are, we don't, why we do the change, we already have five. We can change it to seven at least, and then build up.
Start with, start with seven. That's, that's kind of where we, where we were thinking was a logical start place before.
So you prefer to start with seven?
For now, seven, you know, and then we can build, you know.
Okay.
We have to rebuild the commission again, all over, and-
Okay. All right, so it'll be written with seven members, five of which are borough residents, correct?
You tell me.
So, so as I'm understanding it, once this goes through, the commission can't meet until they have enough for a quar, if we're starting with seven, so they'll, only five people appointed, so that could take a couple months.
Well, it could, but nothing would stop interested folks from submitting applications, and in theory, next month, council could make appointments based upon the interested applicants. So, so it could all happen at the same time, if you had folks that are interested.
And your quorum then would only be four with seven, and you, you're probably close to having probably that many interested now.
Yeah.
So are, is there a consensus that so many be residents of the borough, or not?
Five.
Five of the seven?
Five. Be residents.
And then your, and then your other two be at least the surrounding, touching township?
Adjacent township, touching.
We can have, be so selective, that's-
Right, so I wouldn't say, you know, one, just one Potts Grove, so you have all the Potts Groves, and you have North Coventry.
Sorry?
Surrounding township, so I said township, so I-
Those townships that touch our borough would be West Potts Grove, Upper Potts Grove, Lower Potts Grove, and North Coventry. Am I missing?
Rita?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because before, we have somebody from, um, West Potts Grove, I think, to us.
Okay. What other blanks do we need to fill in for you?
And then, and then, well, Joe, Joe added something I think that was important to, with the, um-
Yeah, I, I mentioned, because, unless I missed it, I didn't see anything pertaining to investigations. So I wanted to at least put some type of minimum investigation, you know, for them to, ability to, to conduct investigations, at least to the point where they can make a suggestion as to-
The referral.
Where to, where to recommend that, you know, that they perceive forward next, you know, or, yeah.
Is it all without?
Not any type of authoritative investigation, just, just enough for them to make a recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, and I can add that language under, as you suggested, Joe, 916E, to incorporate the investigation portion.
Okay.
Are you, President Wynn, are you deliberating all the points so that you can vote Monday? I mean, there's still a couple.
No, our solicitor will do the rewrite, but we need to know what, what answers he needs to fill in the blanks.
Oh, removal of a member?
Yeah, I guess that was the, one of the other things, is whether we allow that language in or out, or how you want that language raised.
Which language?
Plain and simple. Understandable.
As Joe said- No, 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 right, right now, there's language in, in the ordinance, and again, under the existing ordinance, under the purview of the mayor, it indicates that the mayor has the ability to remove members, and so when I rewrote the ordinance, I put the same language in, that council has the right to remove members without cause, which is similar language to what the ordinance says. There was some, there was some question whether that language be in there, and then there was a suggestion that the language indicate that before council would do that, they would consult with the chairperson of the commission, so the question is, do you, do you want that in there, or not?
I send the change that it should be with cause, not without cause.
Cause such as absenteeism?
Well, we have to have communication, you know, the chairperson and the, and the commission have to communicate and talk to each other. Tell, can you say, there never was a removal before, I don't think they want to be necessary for that, to play safe.
So that language, that, that accept language would change then, because it wouldn't be except for the chairperson, it would be everything in consultation with the chairperson, including the chairperson?
And the council, yeah.
Okay.
That makes sense.
But don't we appoint the, the person serving as the chair?
I think they elect, they elect the chair with their-
Well, right, but I mean, that's somebody that we appointed to the commission. Yeah, so why do they have any say in who's off and who's on? We appointed them, we, we are, I mean, who's in charge?
Well, it, the council would, like you said, we appointed them, we could remove them, and then Rita's just simply asking if we do make that recommendation of removal, that we give them a reason for the removal.
But don't you need a rubric of choices of reasons?
Yes, yes.
That's what, I, I think this needs a little more deliberation offline to really hone in, you know, these type of criteria, because now it's like a work session just for this.
Right. Right.
Any more suggestions at this time?
I, I mean, my, my only other comment is about the investigation authority, I, I don't think we should use the word investigation in there. Intake maybe, whatever, but-
Maybe we could say enough inquiry needed to make a recommendation to whatever government agency that it should be referred to?
Simple language.
Should not say investigation.
Are you comfortable with inquiry?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to, I mean, that's, that's, that's a small thing.
Well, I don't think it's a small thing, because somebody's going to take investigation and say, well-
It's two words basically mean the same thing.
It's, it, you know, it's whatever. Whatever, it's going to go through, exactly, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, if you, if you want to use that word, that's fine. I'm not going, I'm not going to argue with that, though, tiny thing.
It's not a tiny thing, but whatever.
I think we can all agree on, I think we can all agree on inquiry.
Well, I think that even still, this much dialogue should be offline, so that you come to a consensus about it, based on all, all factors, and, you know, working it out.
So we can have a solicitor move forward with the information they gained tonight, and we'll review that.
And it's probably important that we review the bylaws of what the commission currently holds as well, so that we know what those requirements are to be a commissioner, so that we have some criteria if we were to consult for removal of a, of a commissioner.
You see, that's the reason that was requested, a meeting with the council before we do the changes, and the bylaw cannot be changed until the ordinance is changed.
No, I think it's important that we review what the bylaws of the Human Relations Commission-
Yeah, I can, I can sense the bylaws, and, and, yeah, everybody can see it, that way it can be more basic, what we standard for. That would be great.
Okay. Very good.
Rewrite.
I'll rewrite.
Okay, thank you. Number nine is bid awards for manholes. Mr. Yerga.
This is a contract, we've been doing this for several years now. It's in order to remove leaking manhole lids, frames, that are around the sewer system, so we're looking to do another, about sixty-six manholes in various locations, and we got a very favorable price on, on this bid.
I want to ask you, because that, the bid that we, that we got was significantly lower than the other bids.
Oh, yeah, the bidder, out of the four bidders, yes, this is considerably lower, but it's in line with what we've been doing over the last couple years, in terms of total non, you know, cost. So, I'm pleased about that, yeah, but it's not unusual, that, you know, there is a pretty good spread sometimes on high to low, so. We have not worked with trenchless line company before, so, but I have no, no negatives about them at this time.
Because when they submit the bid, they do, we asked this before, they, they submit all the letter references and, and other things that you look for-
Right.
-before you-
They give us references of where they've worked at before, and, and their financials, as well as their equipment, to make sure they have adequate equipment to do the work, so we'll be getting all the bid documents to solicitor for his review.
Okay, we'll list that for Monday evening.
Vehicle sales.
We have some vehicles, per-owned vehicles on PennBid right now. I believe PennBid, the, will be opened on Monday, or we will pull the data down on Monday, and the data will be available for council to act on Monday night.
Very good. Number eleven and twelve both have been tabled for this evening. Number thirteen is 804 Farmington Avenue, waiver of a land development.
Yes, Mr. President, this is a, this is a request for a waiver of the formal land development process by property owners at 804 Farmington Avenue. The extent of the proposed improvement is a two-hundred-and-ten-square-foot sales office on the property. The property is somewhere in the neighborhood of a third of an acre, so it's a very small building addition to a developed property. We learned, right about the time we got this, that there was an outstanding issue with the property with, involving DEP, and I believe this went through Planning Commission review, and Planning Commission recommendation was to waive the process, but comply with the DEP requirement-
Exactly.
-as well as any other comments of our engineer. So, in a, in a sense, when you're waiving the land development process, you're not waiving the ordinance requirements, you're simply waiving the process so it can move forward more quickly, and through issuance of a building permit, but it'll still get the same level of review without going through Planning Commission and without coming back to council.
True.
So if council's inclined for Monday night, it will be a motion to grant the land development waiver request of the applicant, subject to satisfying our engineer and DEP.
Very good. No questions, we'll list this for Monday. Fourteen is zoning, 332 North Charlotte Street, Efficient Auto Center.
Yes, this is a request for a variance, I believe the hearing has been advertised for August 24th. In this case, the applicant already undertakes to repair cars at this facility and is seeking to add one additional use, and that is the sale of used vehicles at the property. The zoning officer had made the determination that, that the sale of the vehicles had not previously occurred at the property, and therefore needed a variance, so the applicant is requesting a variance to allow the sale of vehicles on, on the property as well.
All right. I, I have two questions. We went through this with 804 Farmington Avenue, they made it clear to us that if they want to sell cars, they need a private building, and it can't be connected to their service center. At least, that's what the applicant told us. And second, if I read that correctly, they're only asking to use one car space to sell a car?
That's, that's what it says.
So they're only going to sell one car at a time, and, and I don't expect you to have the answers, I'm just, I have questions to this.
I don't know, the, under the one section, it says improvements being proposed, continue with used vehicle mechanical repair, add used vehicle sales as well. So typically, this is an issue with respect to use, that's the nature of the variance with respect to what else they're representing, I, I can't really answer that, but they're asking the ability to sell used cars in conjunction with their existing business operation.
Okay, and council's options are to send a letter of support?
Yeah, council has three options, it can do nothing and just let the zoning hearing board hear the case, it can voice opposition to the proposal, or it can support the proposal, and we usually defer to the ward counselor, and who is that?
Me.
Is that you? Okay, well, you have a, you have a thought?
I, I have these unanswered questions. If it's true that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania requires that they have a separate building for sales, then- for sales, then they can't legally do this.
Unless they already have a building that they can use on the property, and I don't know the answer to that.
I don't either. And second, I, I want to confirm that if they're going to sell just one car at a time.
My, my only, my only advice, Mr. Nguyen, is if you, we want, you can ask the applicant to appear at our meeting Monday night and make a presentation as to what they propose.
I would like that.
We can't promise it to attend, but we can certainly extend the invitation.
You can extend the invitation? Okay. Thank you. Number fifteen, we have a resignation, one of the members of the Applied Property Review Committee, and we'd like to fill that position with an appointment of Ms. Debbie Penrod.
Take the suspense out, Mr. Arms resigned from the commission. Mr. Arms, as a member of that committee, filled the vacancy or the role of a Planning Commission member that's required by the law, so your selections are limited to the remaining four Planning Commission members, and I understand Ms. Penrod has...
She, she has agreed to fill the vacancy.
To accept the appointment.
Right. Yep. Sorry you couldn't make it at four PM anymore, but, okay. So, that'll be listed for Monday.
And technically, I guess we should have two action items, one is accepting the resignation, and two, making the appointment, and that appointment would be, and just for the end of the term, which would come to the end of this calendar year.
Correct. Sixteen is an appointment to the Environmental Advisory Council. We expect that the current member, yeah, will be reapplying before Monday, and we'll act on that. Seventeen, Harb administratively approved. I think that's to replace the fence.
Wooden fence, one, so I do have a new fence.
With a new wooden fence, or a whole different fence?
Reading, reading says to replace the fence with a new one.
Yeah.
But Harb approved it.
I believe, I'm not positive, but I believe it was wood for wood, but I will have an answer for you Monday evening.
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll list that as well. Eighteen, comments from citizens present.
I can't imagine, or, I don't think anything else.
I can't either. There is no one signed up to speak.
Counselors' general discussion. Mr. Kirkland.
Nothing.
Nothing? Ms. Paez?
Nothing.
Mr. Arms? Ms. Colt?
I was at the National Night Out, and, and both churches, or the church and at Washington and Chestnut, and they were very, very nice, and everybody seemed to be having an enjoyable time, and it was really, really nice. I'd like to see, it'd be nice if we could expand it to more, more of the areas in town, but it was, it was very nice.
Very good. Ms. Miller?
I have a couple. First, I want to say, Mr. Evan Brandt has been on fire with his articles lately, and he wrote an excellent article regarding social media and Facebook, and the, the presence of social media and the pros and cons. So, it was, it was really covered very well, and it, it addressed, I think, all sides of that issue. So, I, just to let the community know, and he did mention in his article, I do have a social media presence for Facebook. I do encourage respectful comments and contribution to an engaging, productive dialogue, but more often than not, you're going to find me out in the community. You'll find me at community events, you'll find me at community meetings. So, while I do have a social media presence, don't expect to find me there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I want to thank Emmanuel Wilkerson as well for his Pottstown Talks meeting. It was, it was really great, and I had a chance to talk to him a little bit yesterday at the National Night Out, and we discussed, not only is economic development going to be one of his topics for his next meeting scheduled in September, but we talked a lot about people wanting to know what's available in the community for them to do. So, I got to talk to a little bit about Emmanuel, and what we're going to, he's going to address a little bit next month, is what can you do for your community? So, there is a lot of opportunities, volunteer opportunities out there for people to get involved in, so how they can work to uplift their community as well. I sent an email to the zoning committee, which you guys probably didn't get a chance to read yet, but I've been getting a lot of requests from local artists about setting up a process by which murals can be done outside of the conditional use. So, right now, they're, they're allowed by conditional use, which is a very expensive process. It's six hundred dollars to, to file a conditional use application. So, there's other areas that have a large art community, like Redding and Phoenixville, that already have a process in place, so that they ensure, they have boards, and they ensure that, you know, you're getting a professional product in the end. But I sent you some mosaic art to, to look at, to, to show you how beautiful these murals are, and how wonderful it'd be if we, if we set up a much easier process for them, to allow them to do that. I'd like to welcome Justin Keller aboard as our new assistant manager. I'm very excited to have you. And then, Councilor Proxel, this is Councilor Proxel's statement he asked me to read in regards to the presentation for the camera system. He'd like to express his gratitude to Kevin Steele, Brianna, and the rest of the team at the county DA's office for preparing tonight's presentation on surveillance, surveillance cameras. He believes surveillance system like this is a fast, fantastic way to relay reliable, unbiased information to law enforcement. Obviously, it's one of the borough's responsibilities to provide public safety to its residents, and despite the best efforts from our dedicated police department, we've had difficulty suppressing the amount of violent crimes in the last couple of years. He was able to successfully push out most of the nuisance and drug-related problems on his block with footage from his small camera system, with the help from the Community Response Unit. He's excited to see the system of this caliber, what the system of this caliber can do for our town. Mrs. Councilor Proxel in Ward One receives more crime and nuisance-related complaints than any other. Many ask why they don't see more police officers on the street, and he believes that the, the camera is going to be an officer that's on duty twenty-four-seven, tells the exact truth, forgets nothing, and its salary is paid for through forfeiture funds. Some people may feel that their privacy would be invaded, but he believes that the presentation tonight explains that these cameras will only view public areas. Some of his neighbors had initially felt a little uneasy with this system until someone damaged their cars trying to break in, and so now they're glad that he has the system up, and a lot of his neighbors rely on him for footage in the area to the, to the police department.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yes, one of the things I'd like to mention about, something I learned at the mayor's conference, is about firearm technology coming forward with fingerprint-specific discharge for the guns of officers. This would really prevent stolen guns seized by criminals that are in transit being used to hurt the officer. It would be impossible, because the fingerprints won't match. That's good news. Contrarily, on the other hand, there's now technology out there for manless operated vehicles that work by GPS, and there's no actual tracker. So, there's already been two accidents with fatalities, so, you know, just to say, as technology is changing, just as I brought up the issue before, about the artificial intelligence robots, since I brought that issue up, I found additionally that these robots are going to be able to be hired for customer service positions, and actually in Asian countries already are being hired. Also, the surveillance system is excellent for tracing crime, proving crime, driving crime away, and there are many countries where they can afford to have the surveillance system that is so intricate, it can trace the footsteps of a crime back to the origination point of the criminal, to the exact scene of the crime, both inside and outside of buildings. So, of course, there's countries where they can afford that, so, but we're right in there with the possibilities, and it's a good thing. I'd just like to also say, if you're watching and you're having difficulty and quality of life issues in a apartment complex where you live, or a house that you rent, that relates to very core conditions, I would like as many people as can to get in touch with me at my borough phone, six one zero nine seven zero six five eight seven. I am not a proponent of squalor, and we need to really trace some of the sources inside of some of these buildings for the problems that some of the things that are being reported to me, that they can be placed under control. I'm just going to put it that way. So, and I also welcome people to walk in and hand a three-by-five card to the discharger for the dispatch, so they can put it in my mailbox, and I can read it, so that we can look, and as many of these issues as we can, you know, can't just leave it all on codes, and then people are out there complaining about everything but not reporting it. And it's getting worse and worse for other people in an apartment complex where there could be a hoarding situation, that really has to be pinpointed, because it's creating a condition that's encroaching on a good quality of life for other people in an apartment complex, and there have been several reports. So, I'm just urging people, you don't have to say your name, who you are, just what, where you're living, and what are the conditions, and, um, thank you.
Okay. I will finish. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Aaron from Dana Corporation for coming out, introducing yourself, and if you're offering a plant tour, I'm volunteering. We want to keep as much manufacturing as possible here in town, and if there's any way we can help you expand, I have two ears. Second, I do want to thank the county's District Attorney Office and our, our local team for bringing this camera system to us. I'm pretty sure I can get council's cooperation Monday night to accept it. And last, I do want to commend Emmanuel Wilkerson for organizing the first talks, community talks this past Monday night. I was there, I was in attendance, and I, it's not only Emmanuel, it's everybody there in attendance who came forward and expressed their true feelings, you know, of explaining situations as they see it, and how they think it can be remedied. I, I think the topic, as you mentioned, for next month is economics, developments and improvements we can do here in town, and I do think the date set is September nineteen. That being the case, meeting adjourned. Thank you.